You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 15th meeting for the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 PM. If everyone would stand up for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one way, mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Roll call. Commissioner Graham Marosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Hollifield.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider agenda. The only thing that I'd like to change is we're going to move 11A up to request so that this way we can open up the bids and then, once they open up the bids, they can come back in and give us what her choices for Highway Department.
I'd also like to add a couple items. Under old business, I'd like to add 10D. We need to make a deadline of October 31st for the bills to be submitted for the cleanup at the fire and the solid waste. Under new business, 11D, where I want to discuss about the property left over after the tax sale we just had. People have been inquiring what to do about that. And 11E, the scheduling of the meeting rooms.
And scheduling of rooms.
I'd second the motion to amend.
Give me one second so I can write this down. So you want the deadline to be 10:31 for the bills for all the fired?
Yep, for the fire cleanup.
Okay.
We need to get that rolled into the insurance company.
Cleanup.
Because we also have a meeting on November 6th.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of the October 1st, 2025 minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Consideration, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
Madam Chairman, this week we have payroll ending on October 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $1,467,117.42 and operating expense claims of $2,477,925.71.
Motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second.
She read off payroll and operations. Can we get both at the same time?
Sure, I'd make a motion to accept both payroll and operating expense claims.
I'll second both.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public comment.
I would like to say one thing for public comment. The resolution tonight is already being taken up by the Plan Commission. A lot of people are here because you've been seeing rumors and everything else floating around on by a bunch of cowardly losers on Facebook. So also there's an ordinance being passed around from Lake County that is a template that we are going to be using to try and enact our own ordinance against data centers. Nothing has been proposed yet. There are people looking at doing things, but it has to go through the BZA to be zoned differently. So that's what you need to be concerned about. So I just wanted to make that clear before you start.
Okay, public comment is open.
You need commissioners? I'm from 1498 West 500 South. Listening to Mr. Hollifield, I don't know if my even being here now is needed or not.
I love a full house.
Is it?
We still can pass the resolution here with the commissioners.
Well, let me say on behalf of myself and my wife Rita, we favor the resolution that I have read here this evening. And we would ask the commission in its presence to enforce or approve and enforce an ordinance of this kind going on to the BZA and the Plan Commission. Yes, there are, Mr. Hollifield, there are innumerable rumors out there, but I can tell you two of known fact. One is we have been contacted where I live, but it has an entirely different presence. They want to lease our farm to put solar panels on it.
Another one.
Why do they want to put solar panels on it? Well, everybody thinks it's because this place is going to need all kinds of property of electricity. And number two, the state of Indiana has approached us to buy a small portion of our land so that they can fix the road, State Road 39. Why does all of a sudden now, after 50 years, do they want to fix the road? The rumor mill kicks in again, and it's all because of the traffic that's going to be because of this new facility that they're planning. And this one is entirely different than what's worded on here. This one is at 35 between Boyd Boulevard and 250 South and 400 South. Ours is on 39 between 400 South and 500 South. Irregardless, if it is possible, if anybody would even consider it, the place for this thing to be, if it's coming, to LaPorte County, is the KOP. Number one, everybody's worried about the water and the utility usage. We have been told, another rumor, that NIPSco is investing $8 million in a new substation inside the KOP. Feasibility is for some type of a data center. Number two, Kingsbury Utilities already has water and sewer out there. And if they need a backup, the Kankey River's on the backside.
Yep.
Okay. So the main part is that the Kingsbury Industrial Park has a built-in buffer zone. It's already surrounded where you can't see what's going on inside the KOP unless you go inside the KOP. And there's a lot of already production plants out there, including fertilizer plants, that nobody even knows that are out there because they don't go in. Giving other people time, I would just like to voice my concern and my favoritism as a resolution by this body going to the BZA and the Plan Commission. Thank you.
You're welcome. As the Vice President of Plan Commission, we have talked about it and it's going to be on this month's agenda.
I'm sorry, sir.
As the Vice President of Plan Commission, we have been talking about it and it will be on our agenda again as also. And so please, come to Plan Commission, come to BZAs.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open. Anyone who would like to come up for public comment.
My name is Carolyn Toll. I live in the KOP. I live at 420 East, 156, 650 some, my old address was the other one, with the gentleman who just said that it should be put out in the KIP. The residents who have homes out there in the KOP around the circle, Aspen Lane, Oakwood, Oakwood West, don't want it out there. We already have problems with our water that we get from Kingsbury ordinance. The other thing too is two of the neighbors who are directly on each side of me were approached within the last two weeks to sell their properties. Realtor will not say what it's, you know, who their client is. They want a nondisclosure agreement signed. I have a question for you in particular because at a recent meeting, you said that you had come out and met with the residents. I have been on the HOA. I've recently resigned due to medical reasons. Not one of the residents out there has been spoken to. No correspondence, no emails, not even smoke signals. Nobody has spoken to us with regards to what's going on out there. And you can see from our backyards what is going on in the KOP. Even though you don't think that you can, we can see back there. We don't want it in our backyard either. So I just, I'm really tired of listening to people in town saying, oh, put it out in the KIP. Well, our neighborhood's been out there since 1942. So I don't know why you're so quick to throw something out there when the water system that we have doesn't even, you know, work for us major times. I get water that's blood red sometimes out of my faucets. I have never drank my water in 10 years that I've owned that house. So they can't sustain a data center. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I spoke with you the other day.
Yeah, you called.
We couldn't communicate. We'll catch up again.
I had to be at the hospital the next morning.
I understand. We'll catch up this week again. All right. Thank you.
Public comment is still open.
Hi, my name is Christine and I live at 4924 South 150 West. And again, everybody's saying rumors about these data centers. I'm believing it's going to come to fruition. I work for a trucking company and we had a customer called Gridhawk who does the flagging for utilities with these things, i.e. data centers. He told me, I asked him, I said, so you have a big shipment of flags here, wouldn't it be for data centers going out by Kingsbury, would it? He said, yeah, there's a couple of them going out there. Okay. I get off the phone, hang up, I immediately start crying my head off. And why do I do that? Because I'm religious first and foremost. These data centers are nothing but evil. They are meant to mine people's data, looking at everything people do. This is not just the people where these are going to go, it's every single one of us, unless you're the elite billionaires who want this. They want to buy the farmland. They want to buy it all up. They want to put these monstrosity disgusting buildings on the farmland to destroy the farmland. So we can't farm any longer, so it's harder to come by food. You control the food, you control the population. The aquifers, electricity, water would go away. I'm not sure if they'd even be able to bring water out to where we live, city water, Anex Set. I don't know how that would work. I don't imagine the water quality would be real good. Then you have all the electricity needed for these things, which would be a complete drain on the grid. The grid's already vulnerable. Could destroy everything we know as it is now. And what a horrible existence going forward, especially for children coming up. What are they going to have? These data centers would employ, as far as I know with my research that I've done, 15 people, maybe more if, depending on the size, some of them vary in size. After 12 to 15 years, when the data centers are not worth anything anymore, they've drained everything they can, they're not functioning like they should, then what happens? They just fall into disrepair, just sit there. So the farmland can't be used and we don't have food. Then we have to rely on other countries for our food. It's, to me, this is a battle of good versus evil. Bill Gates is one of the most biggest proponents. I'm not ashamed to say, I think the man is totally evil. He has been quoted as saying he wants to bring the population to 250,000 globally. That's how demented the man is. He has bought almost 10,000 acres of farmland here in Indiana. 250,000 across the United States. They look at us, including you, because you're not billionaires, I take it. Maybe some of you are, I don't know. But they look at us as quote unquote useless eaters. He said that in a speech he gave. So with all these things being said, also, we don't know what these things would do to humans, animals. You've got noise pollution, you have the wind and solar that they claim would, oh yeah, just be great for it. Yeah, I've never seen wind and solar work. Not only, you know, wind also kills all the birds and everything else, so that's great. I noticed they've just completed the railway at the entrance of the KOP. I'm thinking that's probably going hand in hand with all this, possibly. And then if you look at technology as a whole, you know, we've got 5G that's here. I have a friend that works for Google. He says they can't go any further. 5G is it. There's no more bandwidth. So when you have that kind of detrimental effect on health also, and then these data centers that just take all this immense power, don't think that's necessarily going to be good for our health and animals. So it breaks my heart actually to see what's happening to the human population here. And it's not good. And if you believe in God, he wanted good for us. He wanted us to live in peace and he wanted contentment for us. And I'll just quote with a Bible verse from Corinthians 1433. "For God is not a God of disorder, but of peace." So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can say this, ma'am. Apparently, they would have to go to the BZA to start. So keep an eye on the county website for BZA meetings when they'll be on the agendas listed. You can remonstrate at those. And as far as wasted farmland and solar and wind, I'm backing you 100% there. I've been fighting with the Plan Commission for the last three years.
Howdy, my name is Don Laskowski. I live right across the street from Lur County Park. I'm a retired operating engineer, kind of a retired farmer. I just ran out my farmland to a bigger farmer, but I own the land where the water well is. It's an eight-inch water well with the electric pump on top and the green box. So this water well supplies water for 260 acres of formerly my parents' farm. I've lived there since 1952. I'm worried, very worried about losing all the water that's coming off the LaPorte Airport, flowing south through Lur County Park. It's already very dry. The water has stopped flowing south towards Kingsbury Creek. So I'm really worried about that whole natural wonderland. I mean, it's my sanctuary to go and walk around there. And I'm just worried that all of our water wells are going to get sucked dry. The wildlife will leave. That Lur Park is one of the most, that's one of the nicest parks that we have in LaPorte County. I mean, it's beautiful. I'm sure you've been there, you know, for dog walkers and people, you know, on wheelchairs, bicycles. And then I'm also worried about the truck traffic at Kingsbury School. Every morning, all the people from Kingsbury, they drop their kids off there. I don't know how you're going to have all kinds of construction trucks. I mean, you know, have you seen Highway 2? I mean, hundreds and hundreds of construction guys. I mean, I'm an ex-heavy equipment operator, so I know it's good for my union, but geez, it'd be horrible for Kingsbury School. I mean, the traffic would be unbelievable. Would have to have a couple of police officers just, you know, waving traffic, you know. We don't want kids run over, we don't want parents' cars rammed into. You know, if they're going to build this data center at 400 South to 500 South, they're going to have to build their own concrete batch plant, you know. Otherwise, you'll have concrete trucks flying down the roads every day. And you know what concrete trucks do to county roads? They tear them up. I mean, it's just, it's, that's the law of gravity. These county roads aren't designed for heavy highway traffic. They're very fragile. You know, grain trucks, let's keep our grain trucks moving, you know, corn, soybeans, wheat, you know. Let's keep the agriculture, it's such a beautiful, everything to the south of LaPorte is flat as a pancake. The water table is 48 inches underneath the natural terrain. So in the springtime, you could dig down 48 inches and you hit water. Well, that's going to be gone if this data center has to dig a big retention pond and they're going to dig it, they have to dig it in a wetlands area. So you're destroying wetlands and I thought the LaPorte County was always against building in wetlands. You can't, nobody can build in wetlands. It's against the law, you know. So I just feel like letting this data center be built between 400 South and 500 South on both sides of Highway 39 is just going to screw up the whole neighborhood, you know. So I just hope that you guys look at this really closely, the positives and negatives. You know, I'm sure it'd be a great thing for the construction workers, but once the building is done, like they said, maybe 15 workers, maybe more, but that's not a lot. That's not a lot. Not with all the ecological damage that this thing's going to cause. So I thank you for listening to me and have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm kind of here for two reasons. I'll just get to the data center and I just want to just say that a lot of these companies are coming here to cities just like LaPorte, counties like LaPorte, and they're coming over here because they know we have people in our county, in our cities, that will do anything for a buck. I don't know how any elected official can vote to have any more data centers in this community. It's crazy. The stories are out there. You've seen, everybody's seen the videos of what's going to happen to our communities. I'm 58 years old, some of you might be a little bit older than me. You need to stop thinking about yourself and think about our kids or the grandkids, if you're fortunate enough to have those. You got to put your self-interest behind. Unfortunately, in Michigan City, that's not happening. There's no way, there's no, there's nothing good coming out of these data centers, other than they're going to come in here, probably give you six or seven thousand, million dollars, and that's a drop in the bucket to them. But after they get done with the land and tearing up all the natural resources and killing the wildlife, destroying our way of life that we know, what are we going to have left in? So who's going to repair it? Who's going to be, who's going to be responsible for bringing it back together? Will we be able to bring it back together? All this is about AI, cornering the market on AI. Everybody knows what this is about, but like I said before, they got us in Michigan City because we have a mayor who's thirsty for money and they will do anything. They don't care about the people because once their term is over or they don't get re-elected, guess what they're going to do? They're going to go to Florida or they're going to go somewhere else with a big pocket of money, looking at us, looking at the poor people that's left behind. Because like it or not, when the wintertime get here and you have to turn your furnace on for 30 days in a row, your NIPSco bill is going to be outrageous. And what can you say for those who want fixed incomes? How are you going to help us? How is this data center going to help us? It's not going to bring any workers here. All we're going to have is security guards. And you're going to have to go through, you have to go through them to become a security guard. On the inside, you're not going to get in there. They already have a people they want on the inside to do what they have to do. There's nothing good, nothing. Short-term finances, it doesn't mean nothing. Shouldn't do it, none of you. And all the people that's listening to me can hear me, there's a solution to all of this nonsense. You get elected official, you see, and they vote for it, and they for data centers? Be against them come the next election. Vote them out of office right away.
Anyone else for public comment?
Keith Kozlowski, 1304 East State Road 4, LaPorte, Indiana. I just don't know what the benefit to the county is for this other than tax money. I mean, I think it's going to hurt us in the long run. It's only looking out for the county of trying to get back the tax money that we don't have. I don't know what the benefit of this thing is. I don't see any benefit at all, other than tax money. It's just going to hurt the community. And who's going to come in and bail it out, the community people, after this thing goes bad? We're going to have to deal with all the mess that they're going to make. And we see it already happening all over. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
I live at 1502 West 500 South. I'm concerned about data centers on agricultural land. I moved out of a city so that I could live in a rural community because I love farmland. The four big environmental components obviously people are concerned about is electrical usage, water usage, the leaching of toxic chemicals into the soil, and then reallocation of farmland for industrial use. So as concerning as all the risks are, the biggest issue obviously is the rezoning of farmland. There's no clear data or exact number to tell us how much of the farmland has been taken in the name of progress for data centers. But the loss, like, you know, thousands of fields, sure, but at some point, it's going to impact everybody. We're told that we need AI and therefore data centers to compete in the global market. They say that the things are a matter of national security, having them in your community provides jobs, which isn't proven yet, tax revenue, economic growth. But I believe this ordinance resolution can stand as a backstop against the pressures of big business who act with no regard for the welfare of the community. And if we allow these companies to dictate our boundaries, to bend our laws and precedents to fit their needs and fill their wallets, we will find the price of progress is higher than we can really afford. So I just hope that you guys see, I mean, we got a good turnout here of people and I pray that you guys do what's right.
Thank you. Just for reference, sir, for reference, sir, the state of Indiana did a study last year. The state of Indiana has lost approximately 345,000 acres to development. LaPorte County alone, just LaPorte County, only has 244,000 acres. So we've lost over LaPorte County already and the state of Indiana to farmland.
Lindsay Lanesky, 4662 South 150 West, LaPorte.
Good evening.
Hi. I was up here last month and I made my point, I think, on how I feel about data centers. And you all seem to agree that they shouldn't go on farmland. So since then, there's been people getting purchase agreements and it's county property around 35, 300 South. I know you've said you don't know what's going on. I just feel like we need answers if you don't have them, if you can provide them. Last month, I was trying to get this ordinance passed. It's been a month. So just hoping we can leave this meeting and actually have a timeline. I know, Steve, you said you're going to present it at the Plan Commission. It's not on the
Starts.
What's that?
That's where it starts, the ordinance. We don't start the ordinance here.
Right. So I don't see it on the agenda for the next one. So will it be put on there?
It'll be added on at the beginning of the meeting. It'll be added on, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then for BZA as well?
It'll be discussion. The BZA, they will take it up as a special exception to change that, but the Plan Commission will be the one that presents the ordinance to start with.
So how long does it take to get that going?
Well, I can tell you this much, what I've learned in the last year in government, it'll probably take at least six months.
Okay, so what if they already have like the permits going and application process?
Currently, right now, the only Currently, right now, the only place a data center is allowed in the county of the state, Laporte County, the only place it is allowed is on industrial land. So they would have to get a voting, a zoning change through the BZA to do it on farmland. That means you people will have a chance to come and remonstrate against it. And hopefully, there are three members of the BZA that are, their votes up in the air most of the time. There are two solid farm backgrounds that will, I can guarantee you, will keep the farmland. And the, the offers you're talking about is being made by Cressy, a real estate company.
Right, for light industrial use.
Light industrial use. They're, they're, I'm gonna guess, go on a limb here and say what they're doing, they're snooping around for ground to purchase for future data center. But nothing, the firm has come through yet through the Plan Commission or the BZA yet, or through our office. But I'm gonna guess that's what they're doing.
But currently, we do not have a data center-
No permits.
But we do not have a data center ordinance.
According to our planner, and other counties have done it, they are considered to be as in a warehouse, which is only permitted in our county in industrial area only. They'll be considered a warehouse. I've spoken with several other counties across the state that have the same issues as we do. A commissioner and two council members in St. Joe County have told me they wish they had drug their feet. So I have taken over, Ms. Crammer relinquished, I'm in charge of the data center. So anyone wants my number, contact information, you have to see me, I'll give it to you. I spoke with you on the phone through email, Mrs. Toll, I spoke with you. I, I'm, I'm open to talk to anybody. So we want to hear from you. I love packed houses. My trustee, when I was a township government, the trustee used to freak out when I bring a full house. This is, this is where you guys get started at your, while you speak. So that currently, right now-
Yeah, I appreciate all you speaking with me outside of the meetings and trying to fill me in. I just feel like something has to be done in order to stop these.
It's a process, I can tell you that, ma'am.
As county residents, we need like some kind of security on, like, we don't have to worry every day if our backyard is gonna turn into a data center. Like, an ordinance would bring that security.
Yes. Keep coming to these meetings like this. Like I said, watch the, watch the county website for the Plan Commission's agenda and the BZA.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I live on the corner of 500 South and 39. I moved here eight years ago for the peace, the quiet, the ruralness I don't appreciate, nor do I want this data center to be something that I look out my front window at. Nor do I want to lose property value. What does this do to my home? I plan on retiring in six years. Do you think I'm gonna be able to sell my house to somebody else that wants to see this piece of crap sitting out in your front yard? I don't want no data center, none. My new neighbor just built a half a million dollar home for the same thing, quiet, his children, be able to enjoy themselves outside. Do you think they want that disturbance? You know, they have kids that want to go to school. These things are noisy. All of us are here for the same reason, we don't want it.
Is there anyone else for public comment? If you think that your view hasn't been already expressed by someone else, or is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about, or have came here for anything other than data center? Come on up.
What's your story at? You come to the mic.
You have to come to the mic.
Yeah. Getting near the microphone.
Yes, sir. The big news last year was that 200, 400 acres was bought right there by Boyd Boulevard, right across the street from the NDOT Department of Transportation, the sewage treatment plant. Is that, is that project a done deal or is it still up in the air?
Microsoft owns that ground. The city of Laporte has annexed that in.
That's true.
That is true, yes. But according to Mayor Dermody, the construction time zone is probably somewhere between 27 to 28.
Okay, so they're just pushing, pushing down the road to start up?
Yes, and the county has no authorization to prevent a city from annexing ground. That falls on your guys' hands when the annexation comes in, for you guys to say no to annexation. And if 51% of the people say no to annexation, the city cannot annex it then. So that, if, 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 if that happens, you'll be, you'll be contacted. And 39 North, how that happened, 39 North took almost two years.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak?
Michelle Copeland, 1555 West 400 South. I actually did bring something to read, which was no different than anyone else, so I don't want to waste anyone's time. They don't want it. We want this ordinance to pass.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry. But going back to your comment about losers online, I don't know who you meant by that because information is everywhere. And if you do a simple Google with the AI, it'll tell you how horrible they are. So-
And I can also tell you, there are some that are spreading rumors that are not true about anything.
And I'm sure that's internet, yes.
That's what I call-
Okay, but I didn't know who you were calling losers. It was just weird because-
Well, I use a different term of language than most people.
Because I am spreading the word. I am telling people, we don't want this.
If you spread the truth, there's no problem.
No, no rumors, I don't want it. That's what I'm telling people. But for the BZA, how many members have, have to pass it? Is it all five?
There are five. There are five members, it takes three in majority.
Three, okay, all right. So I think that was my only question. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Can I ask one more thing?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just, just, just a quick question.
So you said we basically have to keep coming to meetings to find out if these are literally going to start constructing.
Yes.
You can also go on our website. So it's typical that, sometimes they add stuff to the agenda, but typically, they know that it's gonna be on the agenda. And if you're looking at the agendas, it would, it would, they're gonna post the agenda, you would be able to see what's on the agenda.
And you being government officials, you would know this? Can they say eminent domain and just take the land and just not tell us? And then we just, like, nice lady-
So again, you know, Matt, could you come up here and kind of explain like how the , intimate domain, it's usually only for governmental use?
It's not easy.
But it would have to be for governmental use.
Real quick, thanks, commissioners and everybody here. Actually, the, Laporte County has their own ordinance that they passed prohibiting eminent domain specifically for economic development purposes. So that would be, I mean, you could do that in the world, but you can't do it here. They already passed that ordinance a while ago. As far as the government doing eminent domain here, they already have an ordinance that says they won't. And private sector can't condemn property and take it, they have to pay a fair market value. And if you don't want to sell it, don't sell it. And that's, that's how it works. But no, we don't do that. It's not done through the redevelopment commission. The only way that governments typically use eminent domain is for a specific public purpose. And this county has chosen to, the meaning of specific public purpose for roadways and water and sewer, and that's it. So not for factories and facilities. That's it.
Thank you.
And just real quick, Commissioner Holofield, since you brought it up, the ordinance, the, you know, kind of the template from, from Lake County, very similar to this one and the way it looks in the south, there's, I think, 20 different trigger points that have to be covered. And I think what, I think whoever printed that out, thank you, because it's very thorough, you can kind of take a look at it. So when-
You're welcome.
So when the committee got together, the, all the commissioners were like, what are some good ideas and what have other people done? And so in Lake County, they went through and a lot of the same questions that were brought up here were brought up there about water and power usage and setback and where it can go and how high it can be and what it has to look like and environmental impact statements and as well as what kind of incentives do you want? And all those things are done up front. I think that moving forward with the ordinance and putting that in front of the Plan Commission for consideration for adoption and then coming back to you is the, is the best way to understand where things should go and could go. And then it puts the onus back on the private sector to determine, is this a place where you want to follow these rules and go in the locations where it are directed or you don't want to and you figure out somewhere else to go? But that's the best way to do it. Leaving it open-ended leaves too many opportunities for questions and discussions and pathways to, to get around an ordinance. When you put it in the law, it's the law. So that's, that's all I have to add to it.
Thanks, Matt.
Dan Gurnitz, live on 250 South, 0756 East, 250 South. I'm just here to make people aware, the deal that Microsoft got now is somewhere's around 587 acres. They approached two farmers. One farmer, there was two residences on that property, which he both owned anyways. So there's nobody to oppose anything. They cut this deal. All we got was a certified letter to come to the zoning board meeting, and there was like two, three, four of us there. It was a done deal. So my question is, I'm putting my faith in you people, but Laporte City, they got their nose in this somehow? And if that's the case, people really need to keep it on their toes because I don't think they're gonna say much about it because they didn't before. So-
Did you keep your name and address?
Yes, you did.
Okay, good.
I don't want to see this happen either. I've already got Microsoft in my front yard. These people here are gonna have it in their front yards too, or we're just gonna be displaced. Another topic they're always talking about is all the, we need housing, we need housing in Laporte. You're running out people out of, out of homes that have been established for years, people who wanted to move to this area. It's kind of ironic. That's about all I got to say. Please pass this ordinance.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Jernigan. I live at 4644 South, 150 West. My son is a union carpenter. He's not spent one minute at the job site for Amazon in New Carlyle. Most of the construction workers that work there are from out of town. So we are not even putting local construction workers to work. And on top of that, through my job, I was able to get a personal tour of the data center in Hammond. Tom Dockage personally gave me that tour. He's the builder of that in 2018. That facility is already outdated and they're expanding across the street from it. And so when I went there, the only people besides Tom Dockage, who's, was the initial builder, the only people that was there was the receptionist and two security guards. Nobody else was there. So when they talk about 15 people employed, you're lucky to have 15 that are even on-site making the wages that they're talking about. So the security guards, he did say, I think that they had made $20 plus. But other than that, we're not bringing in big, high-income jobs to the area. Or will we be employing local construction workers to do a lot of that work?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I heard the data Hammond Center too. I, I have some of the same concerns you did. I toured that. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ms. Margaret Hannan. I live on 500 South between 150, I turned 75. All 75 years, I've lived on that farm ground in that area and I've watched things get better for worse. We've raised our kids there, we're raising our grandkids in the same farmland area. My husband has service farm machinery his entire life. Now it's time to retire. I taught Laporte schools in South Central and the people to the south didn't have much. So we put in our own preschool there even. And for 30 years, taught preschool with not much income, but it didn't matter. Everybody was happy. It was a nice community. Now I think these changes, are we weighing out what we're giving up? We had National Geographic contact us two times to see if they could film what goes on in this farm. The monarch butterflies come up that hedge line. We live on this side of the hedge line. The data center wants to be built on the other side of the hedge line. I mean, we're not weighing out what we're giving up for what we're gonna get. And it just, I mean, are we looking at the future? Are we really, do the data centers really what they're supposedly gonna help make things better, weighing out for what we're losing because of that? And like I said, for an example, my little granddaughter came over yesterday and said, Grammy, where's all the butterflies? She's four now. Where's all the butterflies we catch now? Everything is slowly, you know, we're, we're losing what we had. We're losing that life. We worked all our lives to enjoy in retirement this same farm area that we've been on our life. We know all the farmers in the area, we know all the, and it's like, okay, maybe it is selfish of me, but I don't want to give all that up that we worked for, that we stayed there, raised kids, raised grandkids, taught a lot of kids. For what? The data centers are gonna prove, I mean, down the line, was it worth it? No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I just had a quick comment. You talked about Boyd Boulevard and 35 is like two to three years out or something?
The, according to the mayor, the construction on that for Microsoft there is 27, 28.
Okay, because last night I went to the comprehensive county meeting or whatever it's called.
Yep.
And I, I talked to Harold Parker. And he said, that's gonna start in a few months. So-
If he's got different, if he's got different information than what the mayor's telling.
Well, that's what he told me outside. So I just want to know what clarification.
In the city, we don't have any control over the city.
Okay.
So I can reach out to Tom again tomorrow.
That-
That's currently what they've been saying.
Okay.
27, 28. Now-
Okay, all right.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one coming up to the podium, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna close I'd ask my fellow commissioners, just so that we can give everyone the opportunity instead of making them sit through the whole meeting, if we could move the resolution up and vote on the resolution, would that be okay with both of you?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna move 11B up before department heads and we're gonna go ahead and try to vote on this. Consider resolution requesting the county Plan Commission to consider a data center ordinance restricting citing to only industrial zoned areas and imposing other reasonable requirements.
Mr. Paycheck, we'll have to make the First Amendment to suspend the rules and read to by title only?
This is a resolution, not-
It's a resolution.
Okay. Yeah.
If you want to read it, fine. Read by title only.
So the chair will entertain a motion to read by title only?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? Mr. Paycheck, would you read it by title only?
Sure. We don't have a number.
No.
All right, so it's scheduled for 20.
Microphone, please.
We'll come back to the number. But it'll be resolution number 25 dash, and we'll come to that number, of the Laporte County Board of Commissioners requesting the county Plan Commission consider a data center ordinance restricting citing to only industrially zoned areas and imposing other reasonable requirements. And that will be resolution number 2025 dash seven.
I'll make a motion, we accept that?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second, open for discussion.
Right. One of the things I, it is awesome seeing all of you out here today. It's exceptionally important for all of you to be here. But, but one of, one of my concerns about the resolution before us here today is kind of it's, it's- before us here today is kind of, it's a little procedurally deficient insofar as normally these things start in the Plan Commission. So one of the things that I want to, I want to try and impress upon all of you here tonight is that this is, this is a bit out of order for how this is supposed to go. So make sure that you keep the same level of enthusiasm and turnout when this does come up in the proper order, starting at the Plan Commission. That's exceptionally important, and I want to, want to impress upon all of you to make sure we have this turnout, or even better, when it does come up for discussion. And there's a public comment section at the Plan Commission, and Plan Commission has some different rules on what is and isn't on the agenda for discussion. So there it is in a blanket, open format like here. But when, you know, an ordinance like that, proposed ordinance does come up, there is public comment for that. So make sure that all of you keep an eye out on the website, and of course, we'll push it out on social media as well. One of the interesting points that we, that was brought up was involving KIP and putting things out there. One of the things, Kingsborough Industrial Park is exceptionally well-suited for heavy industry and things like that. But one thing it's important, I think everybody should remember, is that from where we're sitting right here, it's about seven miles as the crow flies to get to KIP. From where the city LaPorte's Water Treatment Center is and where that data center in the city limits of LaPorte is going to be, it's close to about five miles from there. So as we look at it, some different areas, not just here in the state of Indiana, but around the country, where some of these data centers go in, water is a key component, even in some of the closed-loop systems. Some of the closed-loop systems have some significant issues still with them. And we look at what's being reported just next to us in St. Joe County, where people are experiencing issues with their wells as far as two miles out, a two-mile radius. If we're, if, again, one of the issues with, I have with an ordinance like this, or not an ordinance, but a resolution like this, I don't want to put constraints on the Plan Commission. I want to make sure that they're as open-minded as possible to everything. So issues surrounding, you know, how close can one data center be to another, for example? Since there's going to be one right there in the south-southern limits of the city of LaPorte, you push out, you know, two-and-a-half-mile radius, two-and-a-half-mile radius out of KIP, you know, you're basically touching each other. And, you know, there are thousands and thousands of homes all around that area that rely on wells for water. And of course, obviously, the city of LaPorte relies on wells to draw water for theirs. They don't get their water out of Lake Michigan. They actually get it out of wells that's supplied to the city of LaPorte. So there's, there are so many facets to this to be, to be considered that I'm look, I'm glad we've got, you Commissioner Hollifield is going to be, going to be looking and leading this up to, to make sure we consider every aspect, because the last thing we need to do is, is compromise our water supply here in LaPorte County.
Those issues you just brought up are on a list to talk about. And folks, like I said, you showed up here tonight in strength. That's great. I wish we'd had this much strength when we fought the solar ordinances, because now we probably wouldn't be sued because they didn't get their way. So keep an eye on things, attend meetings, and speak. But we are bringing this up, and we are going to look at if we do, if we do have any of these in KIP, your issues are going to be considered first, energy usage and water usage.
Thank you.
So I know your hand was up, and you wanted to say something. Do you want to run up real quick to the mic? This is unconventional. We normally don't do this, but his hand was up, and I, I think I really missed him.
James Baum, 402 Monroe Street, LaPorte, Indiana. 29 years here. Now, how come they already get a, a data center in the industrial? You know, that, that is not right. It's like, that just brought right up upon us right here, you know? It's like, it's just sprung upon us, and it's like, we don't want no data center at all around here. It's going to destroy everything around here. And everybody's just going to pick up and move, and it's going to destroy what's so great about LaPorte County and this great area around here. And it's just going to raise utilities outrageous. You know, it's like, Nippsco is just going to say, "Well, the data center gets a break, and the people around will pick up the bill, and then our, just keep on going." And then when we have a power outage, how are they going to supply power to these data centers? And they're going to have to use all these generators and stuff. And they're going to create all that pollution and stuff in the air. And then the, if the water gets contaminated and it gets in into the LaPorte's water system, then we're going to have an epidemic of cancer like they had over in Westville with the Can-Am when...
Oil, Kamo oil.
All that. Oil got down in the drinking table, the water. And I lived like 11 miles south on 421, and all my neighbors are gone from that, and everybody in Westville is gone from there. Now, do we want that to happen here in LaPorte? No. Do we want to have people that have respiratory problems dying? And more people be having problems with their lungs? No. Can't you guys take a lesson from Can-Am over here in Westville? How many years was that?
That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to strengthen the ordinance.
Why, why do we have to go through this all over again? It's stupid.
To answer one of your questions about why data centers are not listed in there, when the last conference of plan was done, an update of JZO, there was no such thing as data centers. So now all counties are scrambling. We have to find a loop, not a loop, but somewhere to put them in there as a title.
They're sneaking them in, and it's not fair to us. Hey, we pay our taxes.
I feel for you.
And we're honest. And then we got to put up with this dishonesty with...
I don't believe we're doing dishonest.
No, it is, man. It's like, we don't want these data centers.
All right, sir. We, we gave you an opportunity to speak, and then we've got to take the vote now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up here.
Rob, just tell them what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It passed.
Three, zero.
So at this point, if we'd like to take a two-minute break, for those that were just like, the resolution was passed, it will move on to the Plan Commission, as Mr. Hollifield, Commissioner Hollifield, has said. It will be heard in the Plan Commission. Please check on the website. Don't hesitate to call the office. We'll help you.
October 28th, I believe, 6:00 PM here, same room.
October 28th.
October 28th, 6:00 PM. I just got the agenda today. We know. We will discuss it to how we're going to propose an ordinance. Again, this is, I'm coming from the outside world, too. Government does not move a dispute of light. So now we'll have to address that and propose an ordinance, be brought up, and then have a public hearing on it. I doubt if it will, but it could. Because there's a whole process. But we will push it through as fast as we can.
Minimum time would be about two and a half months, because there's a couple notice period, there's a couple, there's notice periods, two-week notice periods that have to go out for, for an ordinance change, for public hearing notice and things like that. So probably be, best-case scenario would be, I think, nine weeks, maybe, would be about as quick as it could go, just with all the notice periods and stuff like that. You know, and then that's, while it's bad in a situation like this, it's good in a situation like others, because I don't think any of you would want an ordinance passed, let's say, one of the things that got me to run was the gun ban they attempted back 10 years ago. That got me interested in part of county government. And, you know, that had to go through a public hearing process and a bunch of other things. And of course, obviously, citizens turned out en masse and opposed it, and it got shot down. So there are good reasons why it takes government a little while to move slowly at some point, because you don't want certain things to move too quickly. And the downside is in something like this, where we want to move quickly, and everybody wants us to move quickly, we still have to follow those same rules. So, but yeah, about eight to 10 weeks is about as quick as it can go. But...
Let your voices be heard at the Plan Commission, because there are nine members. It takes five to pass an ordinance to move through. So let your voices be heard. Again, that's, let your First Amendment right, use it.
Thank you all for coming, and we'll take a two-minute recess for those who would like to leave. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, we're continuing the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. Moving on to number eight, department head comments. Do we have any department head comments?
You want to be first, you can leave first?
Good evening. Angie Davis, Director of Facilities. It's crow time. We actually have the devices coming to put up in the bell tower. They should be here tomorrow. We did order two of them. I talked to Mike about that today. We'll get them up there to try and get that started, so we don't have the same issue. The museum elevator, the inspection on that will be tomorrow, so that should be complete. The windows for the prosecutor and the building department, they were supposed to be put in Monday. That got delayed because of Nippsco not getting the lines done. They are coming tomorrow to complete that. And then the complex elevator, we had the safety inspection here yesterday on that, so that should be up and running. We're just waiting for the paperwork. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Any other department heads?
I sat up front for a reason. Dakota Ulller, Waits and Measures. As you guys consider the 2026 holidays, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the holidays that the employees do get to receive at the current time. It gives me the opportunity to help in the community, doing events for Memorial Day parades, fireworks on 4th of July, and various other things in the community. I would ask that in the future, if there's any opportunity, if you guys could consider doing some community service time. I do know of a local banking establishment where they provide an eight-hour day for employees to go do community service at nonprofits and community partners. I believe doing something like this would help employee morale, being able to help give back to the community and help our public image as well to the community with being good partners to everybody. So just if you guys can consider that in the future, I would appreciate it, and thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
If you could send us the information on that to all three commissioners, we would greatly appreciate it.
Good evening. Matt Rude, Office of Economic Development. Commissioners, you wanted us to work with the Plan Commission. Would you be the petitioners for the ordinance? Or would the Plan Commission just be organic? I'm going to defer to legal on this. But usually, there's a petitioner for an ordinance. It could be the government. But I'm just trying to get the machinations right. I, you know, the resolution directed somebody to go forward and do something. So would that be, you know...
Late, I would understand it. And Mr. Paycheck, you might go, that we are basically going to update what ordinance we have. And since we're also working on a comp plan, that would be included also.
Right. I, I agree. But there's, it has to be a document, like, whatever, something, just to use the Lake County thing. They amended their existing ordinance.
Okay.
And that's what those seven pages, they go into the bigger documents. So usually, there's a petitioner for that. Who do you, who should be the petitioner? Which, I mean, I'm just trying to make it seamless, because it seemed like there was a lot of people interested in seeing that ordinance passed.
So, I mean, the resolution pretty much says, "LaPorte County Board of Commissioners..."
Okay.
"...requesting the county plan commission consider a data center ordinance." And so would that be sufficient?
I think it's, that says it's you. I just want to make sure, because usually, there's a petitioner, somebody stands up there and says, "I would like this." So that, those would be you. Those people. Okay.
Yeah, so solar, we just did it. Solar, both times we passed a solar ordinance, when I was on the Plan Commission, we just did it internally.
You guys just did it internally?
Yeah, yeah, we just, we heard the, the requests from the public, and we just did it.
You guys just did it. So hopefully, the, well, not hopefully. The Plan Commission, it sounds like they will be entertained.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a solar committee was formed, and then we took all the information from the public and their concerns, and we included them all in. And apparently, the solar companies don't like it. That's why they're suing us currently right now.
Well, I think if, if you need our help to move that forward or get it, I mean, I think the outline for Lake County was pretty rigorous. Hit groundwater, hit environmental, hit EIS, hit proximity, hit transportation, hit all those things. A lot of things we heard today, I think it covers most of, or all of it. So could be a pretty good deal, and it passed, and nobody lost their birthday over it, and it all got done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Madam President, I have one item. Since, since our last meeting, there's been a couple of, a couple of incidents regarding folks, individual trying, speaking, either trying to speak for us or, or indicating they wanted to speak for us. So I would move that the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners immediately cease and restrict Attorney Shaw Friedman from performing any legal services, representation, or work on behalf of LaPorte County unless and until such engagement is explicitly authorized by a majority vote of this board at a duly noticed public meeting in compliance with Indiana's open-door law and applicable county policies.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
One thing I'd like to amend on that, Joe, is instead of singling out one attorney, how about we make that any attorney has to come before the board and get approved by the board to be used before they do anything?
Do we have proof of this? I mean, are we just making accusations? Or I'm, I'm very confused.
Sure, yeah. So I definitely do think we have, we do have proof. So we have an email from our, our actual county attorney, Mr. DiMartino, outlining Shaw Friedman reaching out to various economic development people, asking questions, and acting like they were at, he was advocating. I could pull up that email if you like. We could read it.
Yeah, I have it as...
I remember that email, yes.
I have it as well.
So we've got that as well. We also have Attorney Friedman making, making threats to the general public in regards to their First Amendment, and in regards to First Amendment, and saying he would have the Board of Commissioners reach out and sue them. I'm not going to get into the details of what that was over, but obviously, the, the First Amendment exists to restrict the government's ability to restrict free speech, and we are most certainly a government entity. And being, you know, threatening lawsuits out to people who host a page or whatever else, and attempting to insinuate or get the board to sue, to stifle somebody's free speech. Again, I'm not going to get into the merits of what was or wasn't said. But we can't have a rogue attorney going out there and acting, acting like they are representing the majority of all of this board. It's not appropriate.
So I will read this.
I agree.
It says, "Commissioners, as you know, I, I'm serving pro bono as a volunteer member of the data center working group, and this memo and the enclosed are sent to you in that spirit." So when you talk about that one email, he was representing it.
Referencing.
I believe the email you're referencing was addressed to Bert Cook in Leep.
In part, yes, yeah.
Yes, I remember that email.
Yeah, yes.
So Bert Cook, again, I'm very confused about this, because I think an attorney needs to look this over. So you're saying that he threatened Bert Cook?
I'm not saying he threatened Bert Cook, referencing the, we've got a couple of different issues here, and you were asking for proof of that, one of which is the email, the information we received after the fact about Attorney Friedman reaching out, threatening to stifle someone's First Amendment rights, and, and acting like he was going to get the board to sue them. We have the issue with phone calls being made from Attorney Friedman.
Oh, it went to all of us.
Yeah.
So, all right. Mr. Paycheck, would, I guess, just legal advice, would you prefer we waited till Mr. DiMartino was here? Because he was involved in that email.
I think the better course of practice, or the better practice, since Mr. DiMartino was part of it, is to maybe table it.
Table it till next meeting.
Till the next meeting, so you can have a more fully-formed
Okay.
And meaningful discussion. And to be, I don't speak for Mr. DiMartino, but as far as internal legal issues, I don't know if that's appropriate for public comment or, or public discourse. But as far as just requiring any attorney other than Mr. DiMartino to have authority from the board to serve as an attorney, I don't have an objection to that. I can't see that as being objectionable. But if you're looking for more details or information, now wouldn't be the best time, since I'm not your county attorney, and I'm partying to any of these things.
Mr. Haney, would you entertain, would it be acceptable if we table that till the next meeting when Mr. DiMartino's back?
Sure, sure. And I, and I would just say, you know, the, you know, the commission operates by a majority vote. And, you know, any, as far as personally, my, my thought would be, you know, if, if you have anybody reaching out on behalf of, you know, the Board of Commissioners, who is in either Commissioner or our actual county attorney, Mr. DiMartino, you know, take it up, you know, between now and the next meeting, take it up with our actual county attorney. You know, because these, the probabliness of this is just, it's just ridiculous what folks have had to endure over these last two weeks.
But I do want to, I want you to clarify. So you're saying that he, what are, what are your claims? If you just be, I mean...
The emails that we both saw, Mr. Hollifield and I are both, are both, Commissioner Hollifield, excuse me, and I are both well-aware of it, as are yourself. You've seen all these emails. As, as, as Attorney Paycheck has said, we don't necessarily get... As Attorney Paycheck has said, we don't necessarily get, need to get down in all the minutias. Some of this does involve legal events, but to try and sit here and pretend like you don't understand what's going on, you've been well aware of all of these.
No, you're making accusations, and I want to understand what the accusations are. So even though I just read to you, he worked as, in a pro bono, as a volunteer for the data center working group, you feel that he doesn't have the right to talk to anybody?
Not give the auspices that he speaks for the actual county or for this board.
And then he threatened somebody? So there's that issue, and then the second issue is that you're saying he threatened somebody?
Yes. Yeah, and we saw the emails for that, and all these actions he's taken, he's gone absolutely rogue without the knowledge of our actual county attorney. We're finding out these things after the fact.
So the county attorney had nothing to do with it?
Discussing this right now is, shouldn't it be discussed?
Anything concerning legal issues, sometimes better for executive session, I would say.
So, Mr. Haney, if you don't mind, could we just tape, make a motion to table this till next meeting?
Sure.
And then have discussion.
Yeah.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Anything else for department head comments? Hearing none, we'll close that, and we're going to go on to request, asked at the beginning of the meeting. We're going to move 11A up. It's to consider open bids for the Franklin Bridge work. This way, we can go ahead and we can open them up, and Ms. Klasser can go out and look at them.
Oh, Joey, so I've been, okay. Madam President, it looks like we have a bid here from Howleyard Corporation, Shepherd Avenue, Portage, Indiana. It consists of a cover letter and two stapled, apparently, bids. Would, do you want me to read the itemization, Madam President, for the bid, or how would you prefer I proceed?
Well, charity, how to, what was the cover letter?
It's from Howleyard Corporation, advising last year they performed Phase 1 of the bridge and worked with Marcus Electric. With their assistance, everything went accordingly. They're respectfully requesting working with Marcus on Phase 2, essentially. And we have a bid here, it looks like, for Phase 2 structural repairs, and it's itemized for replaced crack sleeper sections of $142,179, concrete repaired to the north CW pit, $85,093. Replace lateral bracing, install WW, Andy?
Okay, yeah.
New ladders, $65,416. Guardrail section at machinery, $12,973. Storage room door replacement, $53,836. Replace existing access hatch, $4,826. New siding for machinery house, $154,155. Replacement structural steel machinery platforms, $129,707. So I share that with you, because it doesn't look like it's all added up, but those are the individual beds.
So if I'm correct, I think that's the company who just did a partial work last year? Is that correct? I'll let Andy speak, since he's the project manager.
Sure.
For Phase 1?
Good evening, Commissioners. Andy Skiat, Marcus Electric, 203 East Harrison Street. So Howleyard is the same firm we worked with last year. If you remember, we went out for proposals last year. We were in the same situation. We got a partial proposal. That proposal, the partial at the time, was Metropolitan Steel, and that was only to do the work, not to furnish any material, or the coast guarding, or the barge, or anything. So then, due to that being incomplete, I advertised in the news press again that I was the project manager with your approval, and that besides being the project manager, I would participate in the work, because that was the request at the time when we opened proposals. And Howleyard reached out to me and said that they weren't able to do the whole job by themselves again, because, you know, due to their lack of experience working on that type structure, they would like to participate in the work. They're in Portage, so they're a local union, you know, ironworkers, and they would like to participate in the work, but to participate in the work, they would need our assistance. So we would have to add scope that we would perform to their proposal that they submitted similar to last year. So at that position, it would pretty much, to be up to your discretion, if you wanted to proceed similar to last year, which would be where I would, is that the only one that was turned in?
Yes, only one envelope.
So I would have to advertise in the press, you know, obviously, if that's your choice, that I was hired as the project manager, and now I'm going to perform part of the work and participate in the work, just to disclose that. And then I would come back to you at next meeting, or whatever you choose, with the whole package price put together for your approval. That's the same route we took last year.
So project manager would be managing it then, or Marcus?
I'd be managing it and doing work also.
And do, okay.
Same as last year. The intent, the intent.
So you did Phase 1?
The intent both years was just to have me project manage, because there was always the question about making sure we went through the proper procurement process. So the hope was just to have me project manage, and now, two years in a row, you've lacked to obtain a complete bid. So both times, it's been requested of me to participate in the work and project manage.
But you do, you know the bridge inside and out also.
That's up to your choice, obviously, but that would be the path.
Just to put housekeeping before we move on, I can make a motion to show the time to accept, the time to receive.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second?
Yep.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so how would you like to proceed?
Well, since there's only one, I don't think you have to go out in the hallway and compare anything.
Right.
So would that be what you want, so would, is that what you want?
So we have to make a motion of whether we're going to allow?
We're going to allow him to pre.
Participate.
So I'll make a motion, he's allowed to participate.
Second for discussion. Do you want to just look over?
I'd love to.
Yeah, beforehand, and then?
Do you want to do that, and then you come back? If we have any questions?
Well, while we're waiting, I was, we need to ask permission to approach counsel, so we can proceed with the project?
With this?
With this.
Okay.
To go to their October meeting, since we're on a deadline here to get this done. I'm hoping that when the, whenever they come back for the next meeting with the bid, hopefully it'll be an amount that we can use my budgeted money.
Budget, okay.
We won't have to ask additional appropriation. If it's over that, then we might have to go for some additional money, but hopefully the goal is that we have enough budgeted that we don't have to ask for additional.
You need a motion to approach counsel?
We need a motion to approach counsel.
I'll make a motion that you approach counsel with those figures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, I'm trying to stay in my lane, but I'm just remembering from when my short tenure back in the day. I can't remember this bridge issue being time of the essence, with the weather and things we have to do with the Coast Guard.
Yep.
So I just stressed to Mr. Skiat, sorry to put you on the spot, to make sure that we have the proper paperwork and notices to go out, so we don't get hindered with delays and weather and fall behind.
Coast Guard approval.
But you know the process, right? You're going to go ahead and you're going to advertise, like you did, same thing as last year. You're going to advertise in the paper, you're going to let them know that you're not only the project manager, but you are going to be fulfilling the remainder of the work that's going to be, that needs to be done. At this point, have we approved the work that this individual has? Are you going to work with this individual?
Yeah, so I guess I'm unclear on the vote. Was the vote for charity to approach the council, or the vote that I could participate?
So we were, we were voting on her going to the council.
Yes.
We passed that. So then now?
We have to have you onboard.
Yeah, we have to have you look at this. How long are you going to need to look at this, so that we can go ahead and get that portion of it?
So Charity and I talked earlier, she wanted a gauge of what I thought the work would cost in its entirety, based on our experience. I gave her a guesstimate, we'll call it, because, you know, we had the drawings, we were the project manager. We're just going to be slightly above that with what I have to add on to complete it. So it's my understanding that you probably won't need an appropriation, right? You'll just need permission to spend.
Out of the budget.
Out of the budget, but then I'll have to get a hold of the Coast Guard, because we're past when you're supposed to do it, to get a closure permit, whichever year we're late, so I assume we'll be fine. But I would like to do that process before your next meeting, so I could come to the meeting and present you with the final number for approval, and confirm that we have a closure permit from the Coast Guard. But obviously, to do that, I would need permission to participate.
I'll make a motion that you're allowed to participate.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Could Charity and I keep this, or do I give this to the Commissioner or the Attorney?
No, that's, Charity usually hangs on to it.
Yeah, Charity.
Is that okay?
Yes. And obviously, if you make a copy, that she needs to hold on to the.
The original.
Yeah, the original.
So is there going to be an issue, because it's going to be three weeks from now to the next Commissioners' meeting?
No, as long, now that I have your permission to participate, so I can get a hold of the Coast Guard, that's the main thing I want to get done, and start coordinating with City and Michigan City for their holiday events and everything going on. So obviously, first important is the Coast Guard. So once I hear from the Coast Guard, I can email the three Commissioners with legal, and let you know how that's moving, and then once we cross that hurdle, I think with the work that's planned, we'll be good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Old business. 10A, consider second reading of ordinance establishing the county community corrections marketplace. The chair would entertain a motion to approve second reading by title only.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Counsel, could you read it by title only?
Yes. Yep.
Yes, Madam President, and this is the second reading? You've done this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number 2025-5, an ordinance establishing the county community corrections marketplace.
Make a motion to accept that second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passed. Moving on. 10B, consider health Indiana first. Presenting it will be Amanda Lanyard, Health Department Director.
Okay, evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
So I did meet with my board, like requested. They met on July 15th and voted on whether they would like us to continue participating in Health First Indiana, and they voted to withdraw from the program. My health officer is also in favor of that, so I did a little narrative there about what's still expected of us if we stay in, how much of reduction the funding was, what our restrictions are. So I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have, or try to.
So I, I watched, I went back and I watched that meeting where the Indiana State Public Doctor and the Assistant, or maybe those, the State Administrator came up and spoke during that board meeting, this is probably four months ago?
Yes.
Something like that, yeah. I watched that, watched some of the questions some of the board had, and the answers from the state. One of the concerns that I have about opting out is that we're going to be losing, we're going to be losing some money, obviously, that's coming from the state, losing, what's that, about $650,000?
Yes.
Some of that, some of that money, I know currently you're using some of the money from the Indiana Health First for, to backstop salaries, right?
For which, I'm sorry?
Or did you use any, are you currently using any of the funds from the Healthy First Indiana to backstop any of your salaries in your department?
On, on, are you paying?
Are you paying salaries?
Are you paying some salaries?
Salaries are being paid out of that, yes.
Okay. I know that.
Because they, the county only had to provide $500,000 this year, so yes, I had to pay salaries out of that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's some of the, even still moving forward out of that $650,000, you'd still be able to take some money for salaries out of that, and as we're looking at, as the county's looking at budgeting, being able to have some of that extra money from the state available.
So I actually wouldn't be able to use much of that for salary, and, you know, I would have to give that out, give that money away to the community to be able to meet the demands of the programming that's required of us to participate in.
I saw, it sounded like one of the concerns you guys had was meeting some of your KPIs, and if you had failed to meet a couple of KPIs, you may lose out on some other funding. From what I understand from the state, that's generally not going to happen. The state seems to have offered some extra support to the county, just in case some of those KPIs fall short. At least, at least that's their, that was their assurance, to me anyway, that they would step in for any help you guys would need for that. Right now, all 92 counties, depending on how the vote goes tonight, maybe 91, are still participating in this plan. I was hesitant to get into this the first time around, because we were opting in, we were one of the first counties to opt in. There were still some unanswered questions. Luckily, most of my concerns were addressed by the legislature, and, you know, opting out, let's say, in the middle of, in the middle of the season, you know, any monies that we had received, we wouldn't have to get back. So there were a lot of things that got cleaned up with that, that made this significantly more attractive program. I think, I think one of the concerns with opting out is losing that money, and also putting, you know, if, you know, let's say there were a significant amount of counties to decide to opt out, and we're not the only one, that could jeopardize funding for plans like this in the future. So that's why I'm reticent to step back, and I know, listening to the board meetings, some of the board members had concerns that, about something that's also a national issue, but here locally, I heard concerns about not being able to provide services with funds coming from HFI to individuals who are here unlawfully. And, you know, I, I'm not necessarily comfortable with opting out under those pretenses either. So that's one thing that I think the state tried to speak with you guys and address.
If I may, Laura Nierenberg, with regards to the here illegally, there's conflicting statutes.
If you can get closer, if you could get closer to the mic, please.
The legislature has conflicting statutes surrounding HFI, so based on our conversations with the reporter, with the Indiana Health Department, the one that trumps is the Indiana resident statute, not here illegally. So that clarification, I think, is really needed.
Lawful residents, excuse me, I misspoke the term. It uses as lawful resident.
There's a huge difference, right? Because you can be here lawfully under a whole umbrella of reasons. Secondarily, opting out is just we're not, the request was not to renew it for next year, so it's not like we're stopping midstream, right? We're going to continue through the year. The goal was just to not renew it until the legislature, as we were promised, will regroup to realize these shortcomings and see what they can do. That was, that was the strategy as we proposed, or as we discussed at the meeting.
Sure. I'm glad you're here, because something I became aware of just before the meeting, and I didn't even have time to mention to you, because literally, I was, I was coming in when I realized this. I'm glad you're here as well, Deputy Auditor. The budget has been advertised by the council, obviously, for what they're going to be voting on, and we're within that window, and our, the budget that the council is going to have to approve before the end of the month has, it appears to me, to have the funding and mechanisms in place to be staying in for next year. And I'm not sure how, if we opt out, how that's going to affect the budget, if that's going to put us in violation of not being able to have our budget done by the end of this month.
Well, traditionally, if an employee is paid through a grant or a special program, when that program ends, the staff member position goes away. So we, I don't know if the council, number one, has the funds to keep those staff members employed, and number two, if they, if the council would vote to do that. So, yeah, since this is the first I've heard about it, and you've heard about it, I think it needs more discussion and more investigation to see where we go from here.
During budget hearings, they did table both of those budgets for that, until it was decided whether or not we would be taking, taking those programs. It's not a grant position, these are not grant funds, but it's funding. So if that funding is removed, the. So if that funding is removed, that wouldn't necessarily mean that those positions go away, how I understand it, because it's not a grant.
So how were those positions funded?
The Health Department has a dedicated tax levy. That's what funds the Health Department.
And all their employees.
By legislation, Fund 1159, every single county has that. That tax levy is still in place. I've been told by the council. And that's where we go back. We also generate revenue. I have positions that are paid by other grants. And we would not... We would go back if we stepped out of Health First Indiana. We would go back to receiving our legacy amounts of funds from the Tobacco Trust and from the Local Health Maintenance Fund. So we do get those funds back.
Okay. And so would all the positions currently that you have be covered under your budget?
Under, yes.
And the $600,000 that we would be forfeiting because we would not remain in the Health Indiana First, if we were to continue it, that $600,000 is... And I don't remember correctly whether it was 11 or 13 institutes that you were actually having to give money out to. And it was a various... Because I remember you coming to us and telling us about the different... You actually had to read the list off. That's the money that's remaining, correct? They cut off all the other funding, but they only kept that $600-plus thousand that they're keeping in your budget is the money that you are expected to give out to the other agencies, correct?
Correct. Because, again, we don't have the staffing regardless to do the programming. That would have to... It would have to be given out to community grants.
Okay.
That is a key point that is worth repeating. The administrative capacity at the department is stretched. And to implement these programs is warmly received as they were because everybody was really enthusiastic about it. And we have an amazing group of people at the Health Department. When this happened, they were really gung ho. They put together the grants, they put together the applications. We got a huge turnout of people who are participating or wanted to participate in the programs. And then this happened, so...
And I think that's gonna have to be something explained to the council because I believe that the council believes that the $600-plus thousand that remains, that they're still willing to give you, which is, what, 25, between 25 and 35% of what we were originally getting, is not going to be able to go towards the funding for the department, but actually out to donations.
And the strings attached to that money come at a great cost as well.
Some portions are, some aren't. I know the state was very enthusiastic about coming and helping LaPorte County any way they could. You know, my talks with the state back a couple of months ago, at least, they were very, you know, when this had initially come up, were very positive and offering administrative support to be able to help administer some of these programs. And some of the key indicators that we... And again, I don't know how that translates on the ground versus what I'm hearing at the upper levels from their upper executives and, you know, there, you know, speaking in that capacity, how it translates. But, you know, certainly, if there are some issues interfacing there, I'd be happy to reach out, you know, to the administrators with IDOH and try and clear up whatever, you know, because obviously, if that's the case and the wishes from the top of the administration aren't filtering down here to the county. But there are certain KPIs that you have to meet here in the county. And we look at some of the various things to be able to try and reach that, to offset that for some of these funds. And some of those funds can come from Healthy Indiana. And some of those funds can go toward funding employees as well.
But it cannot, right?
Some of which does. I don't have the top number on my, you know, on the top of my head here on what percentage can be used for salaries. But there's a portion of it that can be even still, even though, even with the reduction.
So your knowledge, is there a percentage of that $600,000 that can go towards employee salaries?
I could use every penny of it towards salaries.
But...
However, right now, I have four vacant nursing positions.
There's the rub.
There's the... Even with the additional salaries that we were able to secure for this year, we still don't have a nursing department because of salaries. I had two leave this year because of salaries. I have one who just told... Just found out yesterday, he will be leaving by the end of the month. So that puts us down another person. Trying to fill those positions with the salaries that we have is not possible. So, again, I would have to... We have to put the money out into the community, which, again, I'm happy to do. I'm happy we were able to provide those programmings this year. And I would love to be able to see that continue. We won't be able to see some of those programs continue. But, yeah, I won't be able to use a lot for salaries.
So your board's recommendation, knowing all this about salaries and reimbursement, their still recommendation is that we not participate?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
I understood the administrative problem that she's been grappling with now for quite some time. And it's wonderful. I mean, the whole point that really needs to be nailed here is we're not signing off forever. The whole point is that if we have to pull out because we can't maintain the programs like we know we want to do, then the ideal situation is the legislature will regroup and they'll see these shortcomings and then they'll be able to address that. And we can sign on again the following year. That was the hope.
And I do believe that you came before this board back in spring, maybe early summer. We asked you to go back to your board and have your board vote on it. And your board voted to pull out of it for the 2026 year. And now you're coming back to this board again. And so we have to take, you know, we've asked them to go back to their board.
Their board's recommendation.
And their board's recommendation is to not sign up for next year. And again, you did say that even if you do not do it next year and you decide to do it in 2028, there's a chance that you can re-enter again in 2028.
And sign back on. In fact, we would be enthusiastic about it if she can get the staffing that she needs to implement the program.
Then I think if your board recommends we bow out of it, I think I'll make a motion that we accept that. I mean, that's what the board's for, is to make the recommendation.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'm not gonna be able to second. Like I said, I did watch the meeting and all the questions that the board presented. I thought the state answered well and was able to address those questions. So I'm not comfortable opting out at this point.
Well, I've, you know, you've come to this board twice. We asked you to go to your own personal board. Your own personal board has made a recommendation. So I will step down as the President and I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, my recommendation is that Director Laner's meets with the auditor and myself so that we can come to a resolution. The budget has been presented to the state already. So we'll have to look at alternative ideas.
And you do have two other agencies that you're gonna be able to get money from now, that you're out of this, right? So then, yes.
I do have to say in my 1159 fund, I did have all the salaries put back onto that for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under 10C, consider burn ban for LaPorte County townships.
I spoke with a couple. Lincoln Township would like to see their township added to it just because the long-range forecast doesn't call for a lot of rain coming up. Cipio, they didn't have a concern, yes or no, either way. And so I'm not sure how to approach this. I mean, the rest of them, according to Mr. Minister, he'd like to see them stay on.
So go ahead and read the ones that...
Ask Clinton, Dewey, Hannah, New Durham, Noble, Prairie. Lincoln would like to have it added, although they're not contiguous. So if we could add Lincoln and then make a motion that those... Two more weeks, or three weeks, right at the next Commissioners' meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if they're all requesting that, that'd be extended. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 10D, we will be putting a cap on all the bills for the fire cleanup as of 10/31.
Yeah, we're starting to get them. Most of them, they're in. But we need to get this addressed. November 6th, we have another Solid Waste Board meeting. And we need to get these wrapped up. And I think, believe, I talked to Diane, there's two contractors that haven't submitted bills yet. We'll reach out to them here and tell them we need to get all these bills wrapped up by 10/31 so we can go to the board meeting and get this turned in for insurance. So that's be my motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Under 11A, consider... Oh, we did that. 11B, consider resolution requesting the county plan commission... Okay, that one's done. And then 11C, holidays. Consider the 2026 holidays.
Make a motion to accept these holidays as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, under 11D, tax sale.
I've had several people... We had the recent tax sale. I've had several people, namely out in Hudson Lake. They would like to purchase properties that have joined them. They've watched them go through six or seven tax sales. The taxes owed on them are worth way more than the property's value. The property's not buildable. I think we'd like to proceed now and see what the procedure is to get rid of them. If it's a bid system or Commissioners' sale or whatever. I think we need to get these back in the property tax sale. If these people are wanting to buy them, put them on the taxes, they can do something with them then.
Madam Chairman, I think the next step would be to have a Commissioners' deed sale, yes.
I make a motion, we have a Commissioners' deed sale then.
Yeah. The treasurer and auditor would contact SRI and set that up.
Get the prices established. I make a motion to do that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, last but not least, scheduling for the meeting rooms.